Meeting for Tuesday, October 22nd for the Des Moines Public Schools to Order. It's wonderful to see all of you tonight. Ms. Rios, could you take the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Alonso.
Here.
Ms. Campos.
Present.
Mr. Dix.
Here.
Ms. Knox.
Here.
Ms. Marterano.
Here.
Mr. Mayberry Mace.
Here.
Ms. Norris.
Here.
We have quorum.
The first item of business is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Alonso, so moved?
Second.
We have a motion by Alonso and a second by Mr. Dix. I'd now like to entertain an amendment to the motion to modify the agenda and move the monitoring report to the regular meeting instead of as a work session.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move the amended agenda, the amendment, to the agenda, please.
So, the amendment includes modify the agenda and move the monitoring report to the regular meeting instead of a work session.
Yes.
Great. So, we have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Marterano. Is there any discussion or does anybody have any questions? I want to flag that the reason we chose to do this was because it was a guardrail and it was on track and so, which is probably not both in the best practice of our governing system that we take the time to go over it, but also it was supposed to be a work session so we could go through a training with our coach and it didn't seem like the right example to use. Is that anything else you want to add, Ms. Dix or Ms. Marterano? Yeah, go ahead.
I think that you've covered it, that we will plan a future monitoring session for training in, on a goal specifically at a future meeting.
Okay.
I would just also invite our community to look at Guardrail 1, which is around equitable access for ELL students within Des Moines Public Schools and how we're monitoring that. So, that is moved on to consent and so I would just encourage everyone to look at that. That is what we heard from our community, that our community values and so we're proud to be monitoring it and moving it along.
And because Dr. Roberts and his team had prepared for a conversation, he is going to give a 10-minute update on this during the session so he can talk a little bit about the successes there as well. And just to clarify, the guardrail will then be on the consent agenda item at the next board meeting for approval. Any other questions? Board members, please cast your votes on the amendment, which is to modify the agenda and move the monitoring report to the regular agenda instead of the work session. The vote is approved, the amendment is approved 7 to 0. We will now vote on the amended motion, which is to approve the revised agenda, which will now have Guardrail 1 monitoring report in the regular agenda. Okay. Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved 7 to 0. We now move to the public forum.
We provide speakers at the forum an opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes regarding items that are not on the board agenda. We also allow any person the opportunity to speak to the board for up to five minutes following the presentation of an agenda item. If anyone wishes to speak during any portion of the business meeting, please email rosa.rios@dmschools.org. The same speaking protocols apply to all individuals who wish to address the board. Speakers will be called individually and we ask they state their name and address prior to providing comments. Students and minors do not have to provide their addresses. Guests of the board are encouraged to speak to matters relating to programs, services, and operations of DMPS. Please remember that Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. We ask all speakers to avoid references to personalities or character attacks as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. The use of inappropriate language will not be tolerated and the individuals choosing to do so will be gavelled out of order and asked to excuse themselves from the premises or escorted out by district security. As a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in a discussion with the public forum speakers as it is our obligation to discuss only matters posted in the public agenda for the sake of transparency and the opportunity afforded to all community stakeholders. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff and/or board follow-up at a time after the meeting. Thank you for your participation. We appreciate your feedback and input. Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers for the public forum?
Yes, we do. First up, I'd like to call Diana Sickles. Go ahead, please.
I'm Diana Sickles. I live at 1015 35th Street in Des Moines. And I really want to thank you for this opportunity to speak with all of you this evening. I want to speak with you to let you know about two scholarships that my husband Phil and I have made available to Grand View University's Social Work Program. I gave you all a copy of that just so you could see what it's like and I also sent it to you electronically in case you wanted to use it for any reason. Skylar, yours did not go through electronically because it was blocked, so that's the only reason you did not get one. Anyway, the scholarships, one for the undergraduate level and the other for the graduate program for black students who are interested in a degree in social work. We've stipulated black students as our small way to pay reparations for the lack of opportunity many of our black students have in our community. We've made the scholarships available to Grand View's Social Work Program because our community needs more black mental health professionals to primarily serve the black community and because both our daughter Sharon and I earn social work degrees from Grand View. Sharon, who went on to earn a master's degree from the University of Iowa and then received her independent license, has been working as a therapist at Willard Elementary for the last eight years. I mean, excuse me, 12 years. We want to make sure you know these scholarships are available because you are the people who can be on alert to look for black students in both middle school and high school who have an aptitude for a profession in the mental health field. You are the people who have direct contact with these students and especially with black students. Our desire to speak with you this evening is to inform you about these scholarships and to let you know we are counting on you to promote this opportunity to Des Moines Public School black students. If you need anything from us so that we can help you with this request, just let us know. We'll be glad to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Cooper Hatton. Colin Coulter. RJ Miller. Jamil Wright.
I'm Jamil Wright. I live at Northeast, or 500 Northeast 54th Avenue and I was here to address the program that we had with East High School. We had a Focus group, or Focus program in there. I've been with Focus for about five years now and we were trying, we were hoping to get back into the school to help and mentor the kids of East High School and hopefully eventually expand within Des Moines Public Schools. I handed out some papers earlier. They look like this. This is what our, every student that wants to be a part of the program sees when they first enter the door, they have to sign this contract before they can join our program. Like I said, it's just a mentorship. We have this paper here. This shows like monthly, we have individuals come in and kind of help show the kids a trade. I myself am biased to the military and firefighter as I am eight years in the United States Air Force as a firefighter, so I'm kind of biased against that. I would like to see more kids in there. That's pretty much all I had. I'd really like to get in, back into East High School and eventually to Des Moines Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Leonar Villasusso. Next speaker is Chris Cuffey.
Good evening, Des Moines Public School board members. My name is Chris Cuffey. I currently stay at 2802 Southwest Prairie Trail Parkway in Ankeny and I am currently a fourth-year medical student and I finished up actually my contract with reserves. I'm here to express my concern for withdrawing support for the Focus program. Since starting with Focus, I've been a tutor and a board member and I've been able to interact with the entire community. I've been able to work with people who don't look like me as well as people who do look like me and my goal for that is to encourage academic success in higher education, but also for people who that may not be what they want to do, do trades because I believe in supporting our future generations. With that, part of my success really depends on a encouraging environment that's safe as well as consistent and I believe that we should want the best for our kids as they should become our future leaders. And part of that really is going to require stability and consistency and a true investment with following up with kids year after year as they grow and grow and give them new experiences. And so, I come here saying that I would like to just continue working with these kids and see them be successful as I've had a lot of people pour into me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Reese Pearson.
Thanks, everybody. I'm here as, Reese Pearson, I'm from Ankeny, 710 Northeast Pinnacle Court in Ankeny. I'm here also to champion not only Focus but working together and building each other up and showing kids how to pave the way forward through difficult circumstances. I was brought, Focus was brought to my attention as a mom and my daughter, who was a Joe Average kid, somehow was able to meet with Focus and was asked to champion, she's a swimmer, to champion for disadvantaged athletes. And she did and she prepared a presentation and she spoke in front of the Ankeny School Board, which was terrifying to her, but she did it. And we, we appreciated that opportunity, but it was more than that. It was when she went to school a week later, she was honored and, and these people who are here were there with awards and certificates and, and building her up. It's the first thing I noticed, they were building her up. And at the same time, I was an employee in the Ankeny School and, in the schools and I worked with Volk Rehab and I worked with disadvantaged youth and trying to get them in employment and that's how I was brought in at a later date, but I can translate for you the difference between what I could do as an educator and what I can do as a nonprofit. And I'm telling you, it's organic and it's about building each other up and it's about making them feel good and dressing them up and showing them a handshake and how to look them in the eye and you don't have to remind them to do it because they're going to do it. And I invite you to come and meet these kids and they'll shake your hand too. These kids, in the, in the right environment, in an organic environment, the kids at East, we were able to, to get with them, to show them guest speakers from my program, from, from Ankeny Schools who came in, again, kids leading kids. And we had the kids from last year and I had my kids mentoring them and then we had the kids group from last year who was mentoring the, the next generation of how to get through these obstacles and how to move forward and how do we build their self-esteem and how do we build them up and we give them opportunities. And the last time I was able to see these kids, I was working with the gals, trying to get them opportunities in, in different places like Lutheran Hospital and Broadlands and all of these things and meeting ultrasound techs and it got halted. And it's wrong. It's wrong for kids. So, again, I would ask us to get out of our own way. We work together. We, we figure out a way, we find a way forward. This isn't about funding, it's about working together and showing an example and inspiring others. And the last thing that we were going to do before we saw these kids is we purchased a bunch of walkers and medical equipment that seniors were denied to, from insurance.
30 seconds remaining.
We had an event and at this event, we bought these materials so kids could give them out. That's the next thing that we're going to do. Kids are going to give out. It's not about us, it's not about us looking good, it's about having something for their resume that they have that they can be proud of and there's a million more things like it and we'd be foolish, foolish, foolish to not make it go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anna Pham. I, I'm at 110 Southeast Grant in Ankeny and I'm reading a prepared statement from Reginald McDade who could not be here. Dear School Board members, I, Reginald McDade, Principal Consultant with Human Capital Strategies and Solutions and a Focus Board Member, regret that I will not be able to attend tonight's meeting as I am currently traveling. However, I wanted to share some important points as Focus seeks to collaborate with DMPS in serving our underserved youth. It is widely recognized that working collaboratively across public, private, and community sectors with underserved youth is vital for creating thriving communities as it helps address systemic inequalities and establishes a foundation for future success. Here are several key reasons why this collaboration is so crucial. Number one, breaking the cycle of poverty. Many underserved youth come from low-income marginalized communities with limited opportunities. Focus provides resources, mentorship, and programs that can break the cycle of poverty, creating pathways to higher education, stable employment, and financial independence. Two, addressing educational gaps. Underserved youth often face barriers to quality education whether due to lack of resources, overcrowded schools, or limited access to technology. Focus can help bridge these educational gaps through tutoring, mentoring, and extracurricular activities, improving academic outcomes, and unlocking future opportunities. Number three, fostering resilience and life skills. Many underserved youth encounter adversity such as trauma and stability or discrimination. By offering life skills training, mental health resources, and social services, Focus and its partners equip these youth with the tools they need to navigate challenges. As I often say, we strive to give them tools to avoid creating future regrets. Number four, promoting equity and social justice. Focus works to ensure that all young people, regardless of their background, race, gender, or status, have access to the opportunities they need to thrive. Our efforts and partnership with others focus on equity and combat systemic racism, sexism, homophobia, and other forms of discrimination. Number five, building stronger communities. When underserved youth are empowered, the entire community benefits. These youth grow into adults who positively contribute to society through civic engagement, employment, and leadership roles. By investing in our most vulnerable members, we foster long-term stability and community growth. Just look at the proud alumni of East High. Our current East High students will add, continue to add.
30 seconds remaining.
Number six, reducing juvenile delinquency and crime. Number seven, encouraging mental and emotional well-being. Foster Focus partners with mental health organizations, schools, and community services to offer vital emotional support. Focus's community fostering partnerships with schools, nonprofits, local businesses, and social service agencies, all of which play a crucial role in creating a strong support network for underserved youth. Together, we can create.
Time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, what was the name?
My name is Leonar.
Leonar, yes, go, go ahead and take the podium. You're okay. You have three minutes.
This talks bad about Mexicans being late, but I was really relying on my GPS who was lost today, so, I'm sorry. So, my name is Leonar Villasusso-Rustad. I'm a very proud Mexican-American citizen. I'm a bilingual, Spanish, English, teacher's assistant, interpreter, and translator and it has been my honor to work with, volunteer with Focus with the students at East High School where I helped tutoring and mentoring them, creating very cool relationships with them, understanding what they are going through, teaching them a little Spanish even if they don't want too much, but I think it works, and being super happy to see them growing from the first meeting, getting way more confident in themselves, shaking hands, looking to your eyes, saying their name, even asking you, "How are you today?" So, I really think this program is helping the kids. Outside of East School, we do other things, of course, too, and I try to address the Latino population in the area, in the metropolitan area. So, I really, I miss my days at East High School. I miss the kids very much and I think it's a very good program for them. Thank you so much and I'm sorry for being late.
No worries, thank you.
Yeah, I'm Darnell Lotman, 5595 Northeast Berwick Drive. I'm the CEO of Focus. We don't have a lot of time, so I just want to kind of get to the point of some things of why we was removed and you're not hurting us, you're hurting the kids. Dr. Roberts had a meeting with me after a ribbon cutting where a principal, she said she didn't know about a barber shop. First of all, Focus is not just a barber shop, as you can see. That came about this year. How does a principal not know about a barber shop? I question that. But in the same meeting, she talked to me and you and said, "I seen barber chairs in June." It's kind of upset with you and then you said, "We got barber chairs," which told me you knew nothing about it. There's a disconnect there and the kids are paying for it, if that makes sense. It should not have never happened, using the word I'm unprofessional. No, we was there every day, never late, on time. And remind you, I don't have a key to put anything into a building. Somebody had to let me in. That would be somebody on your staff. You don't penalize, I take Focus out the equation, you don't penalize kids. You sat and you talked to those kids, they called me after that. Did they tell you they've been shot before? Raped? Tried to commit suicide? They left those things out. Those are the things we work with. It's not the data that the other organizations do. They get the A and B kid and it's good for grants. We don't get that. We get the ones who really need us, who really hurting, who won't tell you, they tell us. People get my passion confused. You know what I mean? You get it confused with anger. It's nothing about me angry. Your superintendent, basically a situation happened and to make it simple, I asked the assistant principal to come into the office with me because I did not want my words misconstrued to be some mad black man and they did it anyway. My question to you is, how come that assistant principal wasn't in the meeting? If he was actually there when it happened? That doesn't make sense. Like everything is right there. On top of that, I would never enter a room without recording, ever. I was mad to see you in the meeting because that's not a meeting you should have been at. That's not a meeting you should have been at. That's, that was ridiculous. And the only person I trusted in that room at that time was Katie, Kylie, however you say her name.
30 seconds remaining.
It shouldn't be that. You took from the kids, you didn't take from us. You didn't take from us, you took from them. So, if something happened to them, you got to live with it. When they brought you in there to see those kids, they should have told you what those kids was going through. They should have told you, "He been shot, she been raped, they been going through things." Every month, we have somebody come in, every Wednesday, there's a mental health day. That's all I have for you. Be fair to the kids. It's not about us. It never will be. I don't want to bury another kid. I don't want to push another kid into a cold box. I do that.
Time.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Galen Narcisse.
Evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk to the board. It's been about six weeks since I've been to the last meeting and just want to bring up a couple of things. The last meeting, I was here in August, I asked you about the three-letter words that you use to describe things in the definition and I was led to believe that there would be a poster on the wall with the nouns and the definitions and the word usage. Yes, Jackie, you shared that with me, that you were going to do that so that when the people came that didn't come to regular meetings would see what those three-letter words and the definition was. So, anyway, just wanted to bring that to your attention. This is not a criticism. I believe in the Des Moines Public School system. I was edu, I'm sorry. My name is Galen Narcisse. I live at 813 25th Street, Des Moines, Iowa, and I am a stickler for rules, so please forgive me for not introducing myself first. But I was educated in the Des Moines Public Schools, School System. I was born in Des Moines, Iowa. My family went to Des Moines Public School System. We support Des Moines Public School System because it is a great basis for an education for anyone's life. So, I go to the website because I want to be a regular attendee of the meetings and the meetings say that they're the first and the third Tuesday of the month. That's not exactly true. They're the second and fourth Tuesday of the month from August to December, January to May, they're the first to the third Tuesday of the month. Please make that correction. I think that might be a reason why some people miss the meetings and have to listen to it on TV. When you watch it on television or radio or whatever the medium is, you can't get the full impact like you do when you're in person. At least I don't. I, I watched them, I'm like, geez, I wish I could have been there because being able to see the people's faces on there, but being able to see the people in attendance tells you how important the Des Moines Public School System is to our community. The second thing I want to bring up is that.
30 seconds remaining.
Oh, gosh. Please give me a little more time.
Sorry, we have to be fair with all our speakers.
Okay. The vision statement. The vision statement says, "Becoming the model of urban education in the United States." We use dictionary.com now instead of a Webster dictionary, hard dictionary when we look up definition. If you go to dictionary.com, it says that the fifth definition, "Offensive," used as a euphemism for black or Afro...
That, that's time. Thank you.
So, what I'm saying is, you are...
Thank you for your comments.
...pigeonholing the Des Moines Public School System as an education basis for blacks and that's not how it should be. It should be for citizens of Des Moines. And I'd like you to address that, think about it, and please make the corrections. Thank you.
Those are all the speakers we have for tonight.
The next item on our agenda is our district recognition. Superintendent Roberts, are there any recognitions for today?
Absolutely. Absolutely, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here and we certainly appreciate your input and your comments. As always, at each of our board meetings, the executive team and I attempt to bring you updates about some of the amazing things happening within our school system, both in and out of the classroom from students and the adults. Board this evening, and I'm happy to share one public recognition that truly highlights the good work of not only students but staff. We wanted to have representation here this evening of our National Merit Scholars at a meeting, however, many of them had conflicts. But given this monumental achievement, I think it would behoove us to celebrate them in absentia. I'm excited to share that six high school seniors, two of them from Lincoln High School, gorillas, and four from Roosevelt High School, gorriders, have been named as semifinalists in the 70th Annual National Merit Scholars Program. National Merit Scholars Program is one of the top academic recognitions for high school seniors throughout the United States. seniors throughout the United States. Each year, about 1.6 million students from around 22,000 high schools enter into this competition for the National Merit Scholarship, and this occurs after they would have taken the PSAT or MSQT. The National Merit Semifinalists represent less than 1% of high school seniors across the United States, less than 1%, an elite group, if you may. Here at Des Moines Public Schools, nearly 600 students have been so honored over the years. Ladies and gentlemen, being recognized as a National Merit Semifinalist is not only a great honor, but it certainly highlights the recognition of both scholarly achievements and potential of these outstanding students. We are proud of them, and they have achieved an outstanding recognition, and we are also proud of the adults who have supported them. This evening, those students are Elliot Albright from Roosevelt, Jonah Cornelisi from Roosevelt, Liam Miller from Lincoln, Maximilian Roach from Lincoln, Alicia Russ from Roosevelt, and Harson Webster from Roosevelt. We are incredibly proud of you. You will continue to shine a great light on the academic accomplishments here at the Des Moines Public Schools, continue to keep up the good work. And ladies and gentlemen, just as a reminder, if you haven't already listened to the latest edition of the podcast that has fastly become one of the best educational podcasts in the land, the Become Here Project, our own DMPS podcast, be sure to download it. Madam Chair, that concludes this evening's recognitions.
The best.
The best.
Okay, now we get to turn to goals and guardrails, and the next item on our agenda is an update on Goal Three from Dr. Roberts. So, if you'll both frame the goal and then lead us in a conversation, that would be wonderful.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, in keeping with our spirit of teamwork and collaboration, I will invite up our chief academic officer to the podium to share some highlights about our commitment to Goal Three. Board members and community, you may remember that this year, in terms of regards to the efforts to value and highlight and elevate the dreams and goals and beliefs of our community, the board has set three goals and five guardrails. Goals One and Two are focused primarily on literacy. Goal One, literacy achievement for our fourth grade students across the board, our all-student group. And Goal Two, really, for the first time, puts a focus on our middle school students. We are highlighting our commitment to enhance and improve proficiency scores for Black and Latinx students in grades eight. Goal Three is the one that we have been given the authority to have it as a zero-base year, a planning year, if you may. And this goal really focuses on how do we prepare 100% of our students, who, when they walk across the stage with a high school diploma, will eventually have what we call a Diploma Plus. Diploma Plus, something else which includes industry-recognized certification, with our focus on ensuring that students are succeeding as they enroll, enlist, and employ. CAO, Dr. Lundin, will share a highlight with you about where we are thus far. Dr. Lundin?
Thank you, Superintendent.
And board members, just the way we handled it last time was, we listened, and then we'll kind of go around the table and see if people have questions that they'd like to ask.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Roberts. When I came and spoke with you about four weeks ago, we had the opportunity to share the overarching model for Diploma Plus, and that model is designed to strengthen our pre-K through 12 pathways, so that students at early stages in their academic career have the opportunity to strive for specific academic specializations and/or distinctions that we would then be able to celebrate at the end of their pre-K through 12 journey with us. At the beginning of this program, it's going to include aspects like SAT and ACT scores, or AP credit, or whether a student has earned an associate's degree, or industry accreditations, SEAL by literacy. As the program continues to grow and we broaden out the range of academic models that we seek to bring within the district, we can then align additional Diploma Plus pathways towards specific academic vocations or areas of greater study. So, currently, as you know, we operate Montessori schools, we operate international baccalaureate schools, we operate schools where there could be a greater concentration of content area subject expertise, and where that could be the unifying trait that brings together the students' pre-K through 12 experience. And so, when we then presented that to you back in September, we shared with you that this Year Zero, as Dr. Roberts has put it, is the planning year in which we formulate both what within our high school and indeed pre-K through 12 model, we want to be able to address as student needs and community resources that will be designed to support them along the way, and then get into the point where we would craft what those unique pathways would look like, developing curriculum along the way, developing professional development along the way, and continuously engaging with community partners, both in the business and nonprofit community, to enlist their support as we come to greater clarity on what those school models might look like in subsequent years. I'm pleased to say that the Diploma Plus Committee has been meeting continuously and will be engaging again this week, and has been working on a number of key initiatives. One is looking carefully at the ICAP, or looking at what it could look like for students at different points in their academic journey, to be able to craft out what their graduation plan looks like and align that to a Diploma Plus-type model. The second is comparing what we are doing with our own graduation requirements and that of other urban districts that have implemented models like Diploma Plus well, looking carefully at our own gap analysis and making sure that we have planned out the requisite levels of rigor and course spread to be able to meet the needs of a strengthened and expanded model for more students to be able to earn distinctions within their diploma. That work will continue in the coming months as we make the pivot into the formulation of our profile of a graduate, which we look forward to sharing with you in time. That will then lead us into the formulation of the specific academic models and subject specializations that will be of greatest interest to our students, seeking input from them along the way as to what they are going to be compelled by, as well as their families, and engaging closely with the Des Moines community, including the business community and the nonprofit community, for not only where they see the greatest demand, but also how they might wish to be involved in partnership with our district in bringing these opportunities to students. So, I'm pleased to say that the momentum is going quite well within this work, but it is going to be a process in which this year gets utilized to make sure we get it done right and not necessarily quick. That we want to make sure that the planning, which initially will involve a smaller range of Diploma Plus pathways, but as the years go on, will be expanded to include a greater number of academic opportunities for students, is thoroughly thought out, is considered through the lens of human capital, operations, facilities, instruction, special services, and that-- and that all parties have communicated thoroughly with the greater DMPS community around what this will entail. And so, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
I'll defer to whoever--
Like, to speak first? You mentioned that you were going to seek input from students and families. Have you thought of how that sort of looks in practice?
We haven't gotten to that stage yet, but I think fundamentally what it's going to come down to is engaging with them in focus groups, as well as survey tools, to further investigate which unique courses of study might be of greatest interest to them, and what course selections would motivate them to go that extra mile to earn that plus in the Diploma Plus.
What month is that scheduled to take place?
That will be in the spring. We don't have a specific month on that yet.
Thank you for that overview. I'm struggling a little bit. It's really high level, without a lot of specifics, and at this point, we're done with quarter one. And so, I look forward to our next update having something in hand to show key dates, key action steps, key deliverables in each quarter moving forward of this year one, because we've only got three quarters left, and I really welcome a little bit more meat and potatoes to this conversation and understanding. You know, I really only heard two action steps from that conversation, reviewing the ICAP and visiting other districts. Is that--
No, the formulation of the Portrait of a Graduate has also--
Okay.
--been a fundamental activity this first quarter.
I think that that is a great question, and it helps me kind of frame mine. Because we're in quarter one, what I was interested in learning from you, Dr. Lundin, is generally, what is it in quarter one that you feel most excited about, that you believe is leading us in the right direction, that we are doing what we need to be doing, that we're being intentional about the work that we're supposed to be doing?
Thank you, Ms. Alonso. I appreciate that question. I am proud of the fact that we put together a committee comprised of experts from across the district, across multiple divisions, who are invested in critically examining our existing structures, as they are right now, and assessing whether or not they're going to meet the future needs of our students, and are looking at it not just through the angle of number of credits or specific courses, but are thinking about it through the transformational experiences that would make a difference for students along the way. I think there have been rich conversations around what the future of our district will look like when students have the opportunity to anchor their studies on some fundamental milestones, whether they be achievements, as I've described before, or specific areas of study that I believe are putting us on the right track to be able to deliver to you a comprehensive and thorough plan that will be able to meet the needs of the entire district.
Thank you.
Dr. Lundin, thank you for setting up my question. I'm glad that everyone's meeting, but I share my colleagues' concern about a lack of specifics. We've heard about this program several times at a very high level, and the data exists already about what our business community is going to need over the next 20 or 30 years. And I guess my question is, why are we not further along to specifics about what that would, how that would be reflected in this program? When we talk about what the future needs of our students are, the future needs of our community, I would think would be in that conversation. And so, where is the community right now in this conversation? The educators have to make the program, 100%. But the outside input, it would seem to me, when you're building the program, would be the first step to get the, what are we going to need over the next 15 or 20 years? Can you talk a little bit about-- it sounds like that's going to come late in the process, and it feels like that's kind of building the product and then asking people if they like it.
I don't think it'll be coming late in the process. I do think the first step has to be, though, analyzing our own model as it is right now and determining where the gaps are within that model, to be able to make some determinations of how we want to grow that out and how that will align with what the business community can advise us on the program. We're very fortunate to have Dr. Tasha Brown, our Director of CTE in Central Campus, on our committee with us, who convenes regularly with Des Moines-area businesses to hear directly what those demands are, and those are being integrated into the Portrait of a Graduate profile that's being completed as we speak right now. But you can rest assured, we will not be waiting until the tail end to be able to bring businesses and nonprofit organizations into the tent to be able to seek their input and their perspectives.
If I could just ask a clarifying question? I think in my head, I was understanding action to take place at the beginning of next school year.
Yes.
Can you, is there a timeline, maybe, that each time we do the presentation, we can refer to? I've seen it once before, but maybe to understand, because that seems, it'd be great to see the progress and the trajectory of how that's actually going to take place and impact nine through 12, every grade?
No, we'll just be starting with the rising group of ninth graders for next year, and then we'll cascade up, excuse me, cascade with subsequent groups of ninth graders with, as the program expands.
So, what is the Goal Three objective for grades 10 through 12?
It will be to grow the program out to the point that it's fully-- that it's fully offered the specific academic models and graduation rates.
I hear you. I just, I, to me, it's a little concerning that our current, so our incoming, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders next year will not have any type of experience. I just have to flag that at a minimum. We should, I mean, these are the kids that actually are going to graduate. So, maybe I'm not completely understanding it, maybe there are things happening, and-- but I'd just like to ask that that be looked at again, because otherwise, all we're getting next year is a ninth-grade experience, and is that for all ninth grade?
That would be for ninth graders as they move up, yes.
Right. So, 10 through 12, next year won't have an experience.
Madam Chair, thank you. If I may, Dr. Lundin, thank you for the presentation. I am happy to certainly revisit a conversation that the board had with the team and I, and that is, as we looked at the Diploma Plus, or Goal Three, which we are going to focus on Diploma Plus, this is a goal that was intended to ensure that by their fourth year, every single high school student will graduate with the Diploma Plus. And so, I think it's somewhat reasonable to have an expectation that our 10th, 11th, and 12th graders will be exposed to a rigorous academic program, which includes some of those indicators, including rigorous courses, over the next two to three years.
I think that's what we're asking. That's in particular what I'm asking for. Not that they'll diploma-plus graduate, but that there'll be experiences for them.
Absolutely. There will be no, thank you, Madam Chair, there will be no diminishing of their educational experience in, right, or eroding of the quality of instruction. But as we think about the goal being set and the measure, the first group of students who will actually be our, not our test group, but the group who we will look at as an indicator of whether or not we are succeeding, are the ninth graders. They will be the first group of students who, by the end of their senior year, fourth year of high school, would have achieved four or more of the DMPS future ready indicators as measured by the framework of enroll, enlist, and employ. And so, we should not have an expectation that the students who are currently enrolled in 10th, 11th, and 12th will be part of the group that is being counted. However, I think it's fear, Madam Chair, as you were alluding to, if I may, that they will also be exposed to internships, if you may, to externships with our business communities. And so, they will, they're not going to be neglected as we think about Goal Three, but if we're going to maintain fidelity to the goal that was set and agreed upon by the board based on the beliefs and values of the community, the first group will be the ninth-grade students in four years.
And I think the point I'd add on to what Jackie made was that we already have so much of this in the district. We have so many programs that will, that sort of lean into this idea, and so I think I'd be interested, not in, maybe if our first group is going to be that ninth-grade group, that's fine, but I would be interested, as we progress through the three years, to see how much better we do with each class as we go. Maybe we're not counting those 10th through 12th graders, but we're watching them and monitoring them as an indication of how well this program is sort of getting out into the district wide.
Yeah, thank you, board members. Absolutely, and I, we really appreciate this push. If it pleases the board, what I intend to do is, as I continue to collaborate with the Goal Three team, is to make sure that we are going to furnish the board with updates throughout the years about where we are, the progress we're making with different cohorts of students. Case in point, just about an hour and a half ago, right here in Central Campus, we had an unprecedented 40 students who are participating in an externship with a number of known construction companies, right? So, again, those students range in grades nine through 12. So, they will continue to be exposed-- So they will continue to be exposed, even as we attempt to maintain fidelity to this ambitious but game-changing Goal Three. So, Madam Chair, we hear you. Board Member Dix, we hear you. We will make sure that we're going to continue to provide you with updates. A GAN chart is one of the mechanisms that we have shared. The GAN chart certainly was incomplete, so I think it's important for us to work with the Goal Three team to make sure that you have that GAN chart, which gives you visibility into exactly where we are and how we're progressing, so that these questions can be answered, if that's helpful.
I would appreciate that, particularly specifically around each of the steps that you've identified with regards to the needs assessment, curriculum development, professional development, and those community partnerships. And I'm also curious about timing. If we're starting with our ninth graders next school year, I believe that the cadence of master scheduling, I know in my district, we've already started that process, and students will be sitting down within the next six weeks with their, with their teams to start looking at course selection and their ICAPs. So how does a student sitting down in the next six, 12 weeks, doing those, making those decisions on their ICAP, what does that look like for this to be revisited once some of these decisions have been made from these committees later in the year?
So as ninth graders are getting ready to make their own course decisions for the upcoming school year, the core requirements that they'll be needing for ninth grade will remain consistent. Remember that that, for that first group of students, the Diploma Plus distinctions that will be earned are the ones, the first eight that we gave you. And those are, right now, compatible with our academic course model and credit model. It's as we grow the program out to those subsequent grades that requirements may change that will require counseling and a consultation with those students to make sure that they're fully aligned.
So ninth graders, when they're sitting down, they will be choosing one of these eight options that you previously presented?
They will be able to make selections based on the knowledge that they can pursue one of these eight options, yes.
So if I, if I select military acceptance, that's one of the eight, then I will automatically receive recommendations for pathways to that military acceptance when I sit down and write my ICAP?
Yeah.
So just to clarify, the experience for an incoming ninth grader sounds like it might be a little different based on what was just discussed. What actually is new in terms of course offerings or other things next year, next school year?
Course offerings next year will remain relatively consistent, because it's going to take time to be able to build out what it is that we're able to offer in terms of the academic specializations.
May I build on that, Madam Chair and Board? I want to offer a practical sort of input, if I may, and that is, during this process, particularly with this goal, I think it would behoove us to remain incredibly nimble. And so I do not want us to get locked into students who would have selected courses and course offerings in their ninth and 10th grade year to maintain a level of rigidity to those offerings. For many of us, we got all the way to college and changed our majors two or three times. And so I want us to sort of manage our own expectations around how our students are going to show up when they would have selected, for example, to Board Member Marterano's sort of offering, the military track in the ninth-grade year. In their junior year, something may happen, an experience may occur, which causes them to decide that they want to pivot. And so while we haven't ironed this out as yet, my encouragement to our Goal Three team, and even managing my own expectations, is that we will create a system and structure that is so nimble that it offers flexibility to students in the appearance, because a critical part of this will require us to give students agency, even when we are serving as guides on the side. Hopefully that's helpful.
Dr. Lundin, thank you for the overview. As I think about this, one thing that comes to mind, I recently had the opportunity of attending a town hall with current DMPS students and recent DMPS graduates, and some of the feedback that was received from the students was around being able to select what they want to do as far as pursuing their life after. So I think it aligns with that. The one piece that I will double down on, referencing Dr. Robert's comments, is I think there has to be some level of offering that's agnostic to industry and agnostic to sector. And that's really the only way to build a program essentially that allows fluidity in decision-making and pivoting within career choice. So I'd be interested in hearing what that looks like. If it's, if it's not decided right now, that's perfectly fine, but if it's not decided, I would certainly encourage, whether those are meta-skills, durable skills, or something that allows development of skills that are really agnostic of very specific jobs and industries thereafter.
I think you're, what you're sharing with us is in line with what the committee's thinking as well.
Dr. Lundin, can you talk about how this will impact our teaching staff and how that's being considered as this goal is being planned out?
That is a major consideration, particularly we're looking at the longer term in terms of how teachers are being deployed to specific course content and how they're being trained and certified for that content. For the coming year, there shouldn't be any significant changes to what teachers are being guided to do, because the, as we've mentioned, the pathways that have been discussed are relatively consistent with the current course model. In the future, that is going to require us working directly with teachers to be able to ensure that the course offerings that they can deliver, one, that they've received the training and support for, two, that the campus knows what high quality will look like within that content, and three, that there is adequate support provided along the way.
And I hope you hear this not as a criticism, but as a help, having those teacher voices at the table, I think, setting those expectations for the future and giving as much runway as possible, both for training and for thoughtful advancement of how they tackle the classroom, is really a, would be advantageous to everybody. So I think as much input as we can get and as much time as we can give to our teachers to help them think about this goal and how they'll contribute to it, I think that would be, that would be a help to getting to the goal.
Completely agree.
Ms. Campos, Ms. Alonso?
No, I'm good. No, I'm good.
I do have one more question, just around partnership and what it looks like. So when you talk about things like industry-verified credentials and all these other things, do you have plans for what partnerships look like? Are you planning to do this with colleges? Are you planning to do this with, like, learning management systems? Or is this going to be owned by the district and the expertise within the district as it currently stands?
I think we're open to multiple structures for what those partnerships would look like, but as of now, we've not determined either way.
What can we do to help you along or help this goal come to actualization correctly and swiftly?
I think it will be helpful to be able to start a larger conversation with members of the community in conjunction with the work that we're doing with outreach with parents and students and community members and teachers around what those areas are of academic passion and/or interest that you and community members would most like to see reflected in our future offerings. I also think, particularly as we get closer to the spring, being able to share directly with students and families about the fact that this is a program that is coming and that it will ultimately have a transformative effect on the way in which students go about making selections of courses, not only in high school, but earlier than that as well, in the hopes of setting them up for success within the high school level, would be very helpful.
Dr. Lundin, just, can you share a little bit more about that, just how you foresee that happening? When I hear community conversations or community involvement, I think of our engagement, right, our outreach. And how, how do you foresee that? How do you plan for that to happen in a way that we are being conscientious about being inclusive of all the communities and making sure that people understand what this initiative is?
I think there's a couple layers of conversation that need to be happening within the community as we roll out this model. One is informational, and the second is guidance. One is going to be orienting students and families and community members to both the concept of Diploma Plus and what that will mean in terms of specifically how in the future, students and their parents or guardians will be going about selecting courses in a strategic way or selecting pathways in a strategic way based on their specific interests. The second is guidance, and the guidance that our counselors and our support staff can provide to students and families as they're going about, at an early stage, as Ms. Marterano spoke to, of selecting courses and thinking ahead to where it is they ultimately want to land with potential accreditations, potential academic specializations, is going to be very important. So in the beginning, though, during this year zero, it's primarily going to be informational in nature, making sure that families have an understanding of why this has been put into place and what it will be looking like in the years ahead as it continues to grow out.
Thank you, Dr. Lundin. And I think what you were speaking to Board Member Alonso Diaz is, the approach to engage in the community, offering information and guidance to students in the appearance is multifaceted. And so in addition to what Dr. Lundin has shared, I think it's important for us to have what I would consider to be an unprecedented approach at ensuring that we create multiple opportunities in several communities where we can have these conveniences. One includes, for example, the monthly superintendent's convening, where list, team members from the executive cabinet and all the district leaders, our goal is also include our BFLs, our bilingual families on, will accompany yours truly into every single community to have these conveniences, where we want to make sure that we are offering students and appearance information. I think we have decided to pivot from the model of expecting our parents and students to come to us, right? We want to make sure that we are making sure that it's convenient for them. And so I think the first convenience for this year, we had a lot of success with this last year, will occur the last Friday of this month, and we will make sure that we're consistent with that. Our goal is to make sure that we have the resources, we have the people, but more importantly, we have the willingness of our DMPS teammate who will go into these communities at any time to make sure that it is convenient for those individuals. A couple of different places we want to take advantage of. One, have really solid partnerships and relationships with a number of members of our faith-based community, right? Our pastors, many of whom continue to invite us to come into their spaces, and so that's one place that we're going to take advantage of.
I have just a comment. Going back on that, I'm very adamant in getting, going to where the parents are. So conferences, honestly, I think would be a good lead way to go into. We're already talking about the students' academics, and why don't we just tap that in a little bit? Conferences already happen, I think, for all our schools, but the next coming year, next conferences, and, you know, meet the parents at the sports events. I think that would be a good way, just to start that little conversation of the Diploma Plus.
Thank you. That's well received. You know, one of the things that I, and I had a conversation just today with a school leader about what will it take for us to be bold in our approach to truly provide in services to our community in pre-K 12 education? And I shared a little bit of history in terms of just serving as a school leader in southeast Washington, DC. We realized, based on the data that is national, that less than 20% of parents were attending parent-teacher night. And quite frankly, when we look at our practice, we weren't sort of making it convenient for them. We expected them to leave their jobs or their second jobs to come to us. We actually ended up with about 90% of parent participation in parent-teacher nights. And the reason we did is because we moved parent-teacher nights from the school buildings to our community spaces, churches, the Y, the barber shops, wherever it's convenient for parents. And that's something that we want to be able to think about. And, you know, I'm looking everyone in the eye and say, as superintendent, I will stop at nothing to make sure that we are disrupting our current model of expecting parents to come to us. We're going to go to them as a part of this work that we're doing with ensuring that we are inviting our parents and students to have agency in this process.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know I've said a lot already and asked a lot of questions, but I, I feel inclined to try and get clarification, because what I'm hearing is, is we're in year zero, but in year one, we are going to be moving forward with Diploma Plus with existing programs that we have. So we're, we're talking about all of this development that needs to happen around professional development and around, you know, the communication that needs to occur and the information that needs to go out to parents as being a part of the new programs that we're creating. But we already have all of that information for the existing programs. We already have the information for parents that can be going out. We already have the courses that we can be talking to our kids about. I feel like we are, we are talking about planning for something and skipping over year one, because year one is happening with existing programs, at least based on what this is being presented to us. And perhaps I'm misunderstanding, but right now, it feels like we're not, like, this particular ninth-grade year, in my mind, we need to be meeting with, with community and parents and students of our ninth graders right now, and doing those needs assessments with them right now in order for them to choose a program that already exists, that we completely understand, because it's existed in our program at least for this current year. So I, if that is a misunderstanding on my part, please correct me, but if, if that is an accurate statement, I urge the team to really look at it in multiple phases. And this year of year zero, let's, let's go, guys.
Thank you, Kim, Board Member Kim Marterano. That is well received and certainly inspiring. Let me also offer, if I can sort of crave the board's indulgence, we are almost in a home stretch of finalizing our five-year strategic plan. And it resonated, what resonated with me is your offering that it feels as if there are lots of moving parts, and I'm paraphrasing. I want to ask for the board's indulgence until the end of January, when we would have put and aligned all of these pieces together that really highlights not only our goals and objectives, but our priorities and strategic direction. And so you'll have a sort of better sense of, and even have, a document that you can lay your eyes on that will give you some more sort of insights into where we're going directionally. But in the interim between now and the January finalization of our strategic plan, I shared earlier, I think it would behoove us again to have an updated GAN chart that gives the board some updates that is a little bit more meaty and substantive, if you may, between now and January, if that's helpful.
So, you have anything?
Just one last thing. I would really encourage, going back to what Ms. Marterano shared, you know, from my perspective, talking about what the district is planning on doing with ninth graders and, and the students that come after that, it's, it's a very, it's very different for our district, right? We're going into doing something way, way different than what we've done before. And so it almost feels like we're speaking a different language. And the sooner we introduce this language to families, the better they're able to speak it, and the better they're able to share with their students, with their children. And that is a great way for parents to engage and to help our district. But we have to get started as soon as we can and be as intentional as we can. If we want to be truly, if we want families to be able to dominate the language.
Received.
So I'll wrap us up. There's the lights. First of all, Dr. Lundin, thank you. You have a team of people that you work with, and so I really want to say thank you. I also really want to assume positive intent, but I think what you're getting from the board right now is a feeling of inaction and a feeling that we gave a gift to the, to the staff, which is a year, to create a set of programs that would actually take place. And I actually still don't know place. And I actually still don't know what the vision is, what will be different. And I feel like we should be there by this point. And so I would actually ask, a Gantt chart is actually not sufficient anymore. I think we need more depth. I think we actually have to learn more about what the experiences will be because if nothing new is happening next year, other than a scheduling experience, I kind of want to know if that was really a good use of a year. I think, I think somehow maybe we're not in sync on expectations. So Dr. Roberts and I conferred and we suggested that we would do a more in-depth work session. And I think what you should do is assume that we are voracious readers and incredibly curious. This is actually a passion point for many of us. This was a big goal we set for Dr. Roberts and for this district. This is actually supposed to be our competitive advantage. And I feel like by the time we'll actually have something, a buildings will have been built, right? And so I just, I think we need to partner better together to accelerate our progress.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That charge is received. Thank you, Dr. Lundin.
Thank you, Dr. Lundin.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now going to move to hearing of a success for DNPS, and that is guardrail three. Correct, Ms. Rios? So, Dr. Roberts, do you want to frame guardrail three? And I think just read it and then let people know the status. And I think you were just going to give a quick update on it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly with brevity. You all can put the clock on me. So guardrail one, actually, is that the superintendent shall not allow inequitable access for English language learner students or the continuation of systems that allows for it. Essentially, this guardrail is really anchored in the idea that our English language learners, not only in this district, but around the country, have been under margins for a very long time. And it's important that we create systems and structures to ensure that we are erecting sort of the right processes that allows our English language learners to have increased access. The board, in terms of its investment from the community in terms of their beliefs and what they value, set this guardrail to ensure that we are truly, truly not allowing any systems to continue that will not allow this kind of access that will ensure the success of our English language learners. Board members and community, I want to certainly impress upon you that this guardrail is critical no more than ever. As of a couple of weeks ago, we have seen a significant but not unexpected shift in our demographic makeup of students in the Des Moines Public Schools with just over 30,000 students. The majority of students enroll in the Des Moines Public Schools for the very first time in the history of this district since 1907 are Hispanic students at 32%. With the second highest...
Would you share that again, please?
Yes, Board Member Alonso Diaz, and I'll share with some bravado if I may. Our Hispanic students are now the highest enrolled students in the district at 32%, with the second largest number being our white students at 31%. I think equally as important is the fact that a quarter of our students, 25% of our students actually are English language learners. And this number is growing each and every day. We have 125 different languages spoken in the Des Moines Public Schools. And with that said, the fact that, Madam Chair, you highlighted this guardrail as a celebration, it's because we are making progress with regards to our actual target to ensuring that we create equitable access to our students versus the actual. We've seen a steady increase around the increases, and this guardrail actually continues to move steadily towards improvement. I want to highlight a couple of key points, if you may, in terms of why this is happening. In terms of our actions and strategy, what we have done is to make sure with some intentionality, our highest and most rigorous academic programs, many of which are happening in our comprehensive high schools, but some of which are here at Central Campus and Central Academy, as well as our ALP program, we've increased the number of our students who are English language learners, who not only enrolled there, but the grades that we've seen from them, we've seen an increase in their grades and grade attainment. Let me highlight a couple of things that are going well. During the 23, 24 school year, 83% of all grades earned by our English language learners, or what we're calling now our multi-language learners at Central Academy, were a B or higher. In accelerated core courses, 82% of grades earned by all of our multi-language learner students at Central Academy were a B or higher. Access to our language courses increased the likelihood of multi-language student participation in Central Academy, Central Campus, as well as ALP. One thing that we did not list and highlight here is the fact that our seal of bilinguacy program, essentially which is any student who demonstrates mastery or proficiency in two or more languages receives a seal of bilinguacy, really speaks volumes about the fact that we are creating more opportunities for access. What is of utmost importance is not necessarily the work that is coming out of the district office, but what is happening here at Central Campus and Central Academy with our directors and their teachers and staff. They are intentionally creating opportunities to remove barriers that allow students to have more access to not only those academic programs, but here at Central Campus, we have a world-class program ranked among many in the country where we have more than 30 industry-recognized offerings. Our multi-language learners now have an increase in numbers in terms of their exposure to these programs. And so we are excited to have this very brief moment of celebration, but we certainly will not become complacent and stop here. It is our goal to make sure that when we come back to the board and community again, we start to see the arrow going in a much stronger direction as we continue to break down barriers and create more equitable access for all of our multi-language learners and disrupt all of our systems that have prevented them from having this kind of access. Madam Chair, if it pleases the board, that concludes my brief update.
If I could just ask one follow-up?
Certainly.
Is it, am I understanding correctly that there was a, a language instructor added to Central Campus or Academy this year to support?
I believe that that is true. I'll certainly confirm that, yes.
Yeah. I think if that actually is the case, that should be a celebration also because you're adding access for students, ELL students. So, just want to call that out.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. We're actually going to move to consent at this point. So, as a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in discussion or deliberation with the speaker regarding comments made to agenda items. Discussion and deliberation will remain among board members at the board table with speakers' comments informing the board's discussion, deliberation, and determinations as deemed necessary. Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers?
No speakers.
Mr. Dix, I believe you have the consent, Ms. Campos, I believe you have the consent motion.
Yes. I move that the board approves the consent item in accordance with the recommendation action for each item on, on the consent agenda, including bills previously authorized, certified, and approved for payment by the board secretary in the amount of $5,758,790.77.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Campos and a second by Ms. Martorano. Any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, seven to zero. Next on the agenda are our public hearings. First item is F1, public hearing for easement for traffic signal and street lighting systems at Callahan Middle School. The public hearing will come to order. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item? Hearing, no speakers. I will close the public hearing. Dr. Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board approve granting a permanent easement for traffic signal and street lighting systems to the city of Des Moines at Callahan Middle School following a public hearing.
May I have a motion and a second to approve this item?
Martorano, so moved.
Campos, second.
We have a motion by Ms. Martorano and a second by Ms. Campos. Any discussions or questions?
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, you can.
These poor two public hearing items is really deep in my heart, and I'm just excited that we're moving in the right direction, and this is another victory. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, seven to zero. Next item is F2, public hearing for easement for traffic signal and street lighting systems at Findlay Elementary School. The public hearing will come to order. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item? Hearing, no one. I'll close the public hearing. Dr. Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend the board approve granting a permanent easement for traffic signal and street lighting systems to the city of Des Moines at Findlay Elementary School following a public hearing.
May I have a motion and a second to approve this item?
Martorano, so moved.
Dix, second.
We have a motion by Ms. Martorano and a second by Mr. Dix. Any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, seven to zero. Now we have one other item. The item is G1, request to the School Budget Review Committee for modified allowable growth due to the limited English program deficit fiscal year 2024. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend the board approve the request to the School Budget Review Committee, SBRC, for modified allowable growth, MAG, in the amount of $599,816.62 due to the limited English proficient, English program allowed costs were higher than foundation aid and LEP revenues received for LEP students in fiscal year 2024.
May I have a motion and a second to approve this item?
Alonso, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Alonso and a second by Ms. Martorano. Board, any discussion? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, seven to zero. Next on the agenda, we have items of privilege. I would like to ask our board members if you have anything you would like to share.
I would like, I would like to invite everyone to attend our community legislative action team meeting on November 16th. We are still determining a location on that, but we will be inviting our legislators and district team members to do a budget presentation so that our legislators can advocate properly at, as soon as the legislative session begins. So mark your calendars, Saturday morning, November 16th. I believe it will be at Capital View, but we're still working out some of those details. Stay tuned.
I'm having a senior moment because I wrote a word down, and I don't remember what I actually wanted to say about it. Sorry. So to fill space until I actually come up with it, Dr. Roberts, I have to point out that I think your laptop needs a little enhancement because you seem to be supporting two of five high schools, and, and everybody can see it on the screen. So I just want to highlight that for you.
Madam Chair, if I may respond to that.
Not enough money for stickers, is that what you're going to say?
This is my signal, actually. It's our beloved principals from the other schools, and I know that sometime within the next 48 hours, they will share stickers with me. So this was my signal to them. I did not want to ask them directly, so this is what I'm doing.
Right. I forgot as well. I had the privilege of attending the Conference of the Great, Council of Great City Schools last week in Dallas, Texas, where our superintendent and team had the privilege of representing Des Moines Public Schools and our exemplar budgeting workshop tools and how we align our budget with goals and guardrails and how we align resources. So they did a fantastic job presenting at the conference and had the opportunity to collaborate with the largest school districts in the country around educating our youth, particularly our, our Black and Latina men and women, as well as our, our just, our English learners, our multilingual learners, and really focused my task force time on not only governance, but also our young Black and, and Latinx students. So thank you for the opportunity for me to attend, and congratulations to Dr. Roberts and his team on representing Des Moines Public Schools in a very positive way.
Thanks.
I was able to attend a Park Avenue Elementary School last Thursday, I think it was, with a couple of the cabinet members. And I just want to give my hats off to those teachers and administration there at Park Avenue. It was a pleasure being there. And those students, those fifth graders, very good speakers, and they had a lot of ideas.
Great. Thank you. I do want to point out, board colleagues, that Jenna and Kim, while I guess officially unofficial, have agreed to help with some of the coaching around student outcomes-focused governance to make sure we stay on track and to ensure we are kind of both adhering to what, what makes sense, but also getting the training that we need in the meetings that we needed. So if you hear them trying to boss you around, the answer is yes.
Always.
Always. Okay. Dr. Roberts, would you like to share anything?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly appreciate the opportunity. You know, one of the things that we value here in the Des Moines Public Schools is input from every stakeholder, but most importantly, we truly value the input of those students or individuals who are our students that we are committed to serving. As a part of this, this sort of desire, we've spent the last year collaborating with teachers at many of our high schools and certainly with a number of our students as well who were both ninth, alternate ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade to form a superintendent-student advisory council. Essentially, this is a group of students who will convene at least once monthly with the superintendent and members of the executive cabinet. There will be occasion when they want to invite board members to be a part of those convening as well. The representative group consists of two elected students from each of our five comprehensive high schools and our virtual academy. And they will represent the voices of the more than 30,000 students, bringing to the table some of their needs, desires, beliefs, and the things that they value. And we intend to make sure that we are not only giving them a voice, but we want to make sure that we are valuing what it is they're bringing to the table so that we can truly support them. Our first convening will occur November 12th, 2024. We are excited about finding the day and time at one of our upcoming, upcoming board meetings to bring those students here to the board, to officially introduce them to the community and the board. Truly, truly excited about that. Also want to really offer, if I may, Madam Chair, and just as a reminder, because I know that the board, while you are committed to investing in each of the five guardrails, the guardrails that truly represent, represent and reflects the vision and values of the community, one of the guardrails that you continue to impress upon my team and I, and it's one that we truly value and will do everything in our power to make sure that is realized, is guardrail five. And guardrail five, for the benefit of the community, is the superintendent shall not allow an environment that allows families and viable community partners to be excluded, uninvited, or unwelcome into the district's activities and endeavors. Let me offer that we have approximately 200 community partners, and we value them. History tells us, and having been in the business of pre-K-12 public education for about 25 years, I know that we cannot do this work alone. Each meeting, for example, when I sit here and I see our, some of our viable partners with our support in public education in their shirts, I continue to be inspired and reminded about why this work is important. Many of you sitting here in the meeting today will acknowledge that equality public education changed the trajectory of your lives. It transformed who you are. And that's what we want to do here in the Des Moines Public Schools, but we also recognize we cannot do it alone. And so I want to continue to invite our community partners to join us and be a part of this work. But I also want to share that over the last five years particularly, particularly after COVID, pre-K-12 public school educators have experienced an unprecedented amount of vitriol, unnecessary and unwarranted attacks, manufacturing crises and data to ridicule and criticize them, teachers, school leaders, and certainly superintendents. As a matter of fact, a number of research groups, and I believe the RAND cooperation is one of them, have even suggested that the 20% of superintendent turnover that we've seen is attributed to the kind of attacks that are necessary. Here's what I want to offer. Community partners, we will continue to open up the doors and invite you in. But the board hired me to lead the instructional vision of this organization, to ensure that there's a commitment to my fiduciary responsibility, and to make sure that I'm galvanizing community. there's a commitment to my fiduciary responsibility, and to make sure that I'm galvanizing community partnerships. But the one that I also take very seriously is that I'm here to serve as a protector of every single adult of the 5,000 in this school system. And what I will not allow to happen is for any adult who serve our students to be victimized, bullied, or be subject to vitriol. Many superintendents around the country, principals and teachers continue to deal with this every single day. I sit here this evening to tell you that we are going to continue to change the lives of our children and our students. We will continue to open up the door and windows for community partners. But what I will not do and have happen on my watch is I will not be bullied in any room, in any space, and neither will any of our 5,000 employees. And I'm always going to remain open to having conversations with and engaging with any viable community partner or member who wants to support this incredible vision that the board has set for us. Madam Chair, I'll conclude my remarks.
Thank you for joining us this evening. We greatly appreciate all of you being here, and I think it's a miracle nobody believed it, but we're adjourning at 7 o'clock.
Great, John.